Evening everyone, pardon my voice, I feel better than I sound. But I'll try to get through the meeting here with my voice like this. But want to welcome everyone here for this study session. And I believe, Larry, are you gonna start this off?
I'll let Stephen.
Steven, okay, thanks Steven.
Good evening Mayor and Council. We have Metronet with us, as you know, Metronet is a fiber provider. And they've been in all of our community for a while now. And we wanted to have them come and give a talk about how they're proceeding with the construction and some of the, I know we've had some complaints that have come through. And so, we wanted to make sure that they have the ability to address those. And so, we'll turn it over to Metronet.
Okay.
Good evening and hello, and thank you for the opportunity to talk and present with you all. I was here back in April, very brief short session, to explain a little bit about our notification system. So, I do appreciate the opportunity for you all to listen and have that conversation back and forth this evening about an update on our fiber build out. I do also have my teammates, Jeff Jenks, who is our Senior Construction Director here at Metronet, as well as Marshall Quarles, who is our Project Directors as well. So, I thought I'd start out a little bit more information about Metronet, the importance of fiber, what that entails through the construction process. And then, going over a little bit of what we do as far as resident notifications, and then open up to questions and concerns that you might have for me or other members of the Metronet team. If that's okay, I can go ahead and start.
Sure. And if you could pull the microphone down a little bit, so we can hear you a little bit better.
Is that a little better?
That's better, yes, thank you.
Here we go. So, Metronet has been actually in business for over 25 years. We are very proud to be one of the nation's largest and fastest growing fiber to the home builders. We are actually in over 300 communities across the country. And we are getting ready to announce that in our 20th state. Right now, we're at 19, but we're getting ready to unveil and tell everybody about our 20th state addition. So, we're really excited about that. We are in over 300 of those communities, and we provide internet and fiber to 2.6 million homes and/or businesses across the country. So, we are proud to be investing billions of dollars to cities across the country to bring cities into the new age of fiber technology and connectivity. Construction, it's very exciting. It's kind of like building a home when you hear about, you know, you're getting ready to start a project. If you've remodeled or built a home, there's that time and period of excitement, and then comes the construction and the construction woes. There's no easy way around it, construction is messy. What we are here today is to try to lessen those woes and the construction process. And kind of like building, once you get through that, you have your new home or your remodeled home, and you can't imagine going back once you've had that new service, which is what Metronet is and what we do. So, we do understand that it's messy, and we're here to explain how we hope to really get ahead of that with construction concerns with residents, and to do a great job of doing our, getting laying our fiber groundwork. So, we do hold our crews to the highest standards. If not, they are removed. We do try to work with them to explain the permitting process and the expectations of our standards. However, if that is not achieved, then we do remove those teams. With that being said, we do recognize that we've had some, a little bit of shortcomings in the, with Casa Grande. But we are here as a team to reassure you that we are committed to bringing the best possible service that we can to your community. Fiber delivers data at the speed of light. The difference between data with fiber and that cable was designed to build and to deliver video services. Another thing is the economical impact that comes along with being connected to fiber and broadband. So, the amount of property value can go up by 14 to 17 percent. Seventeen percent is more in the urban areas, whereas the non-urban areas can be up to 14 percent. Fiber is built for the internet, it fuels our day-to-day lives, and it powers businesses, healthcare, education, and remote work. It allows access to healthcare for everybody. It also allows access for education. It grows businesses, innovation, and brings everybody into the new world. Sorry about that, I went a little bit too ahead. Next, I would like to go into the resident communications. We have a four-tiered system. We usually send two different pieces through via the mail. One is a regular letter, and then the other one is a little bit of a postcard that usually goes out 10 to seven days. The letter goes out 15 to 30 days prior to construction. We also have little door hangers. After our pre-con meetings with the city, our groups will, our team will go out and put these door hangers out to the residents to let them know that we are coming and will be in the area. Additionally, we have a construction website that is solely based on construction concerns. It's not about sales, it's not about trying to grab customers, it is to educate them on the process of construction. This construction website goes into educational videos on right-of-way easement, what our teams and crews are doing in the area. And they can go through there and find all kinds of FAQs to address any concerns or questions they might have. They can go through and put a ticket on their own. We also have a customer website, phone number where they can call. A lot of times newer, younger people like to go in and submit a ticket themselves, they're just a little bit more tech savvy. Whereas sometimes, we've found that a lot of older people would like someone to answer their concerns, and if they can't, then they can submit a ticket. We can submit a ticket for them. Additionally, if that's, I'm also here to do with that as well. So, if anyone has a concerned resident, I am more than happy to speak with them and then also put in a ticket on their behalf. That ticket also gives them access to our boots-on-the-ground team, so they can address any concerns. A lot of times, they may have a question of, what are you guys doing? Why is my yard being marked? Why are the utilities being marked up with paint? So, our boots-on-the-ground team can address that with them. Also, sometimes if they have a sprinkler system, or a dog fence, or something they'd like us to know, they can put in that ticket, and then we have a, they have a direct line to us. Our response rate is 99 percent of those concerns are addressed within 90, within 24 hours. And if someone calls on a Friday afternoon and submits a ticket, it might be Monday. So, it's usually a business, a business day that those are, where we reach back out to them. Sometimes those concerns do have to be put on hold if it is damage to a sprinkler system or we need to pour concrete. Sometimes that takes a little bit longer than the 24 hours. But we do try to get restoration ideally as quick as we can. This is an example of our huts or our little flower pots or little boxes that we hold the, to the fiber in the ground. They are flush and set in the ground. I don't know if any of you have ever seen, or a lot of the times, they used to be above ground, they're a little bit more of an ice ore. So, Metronet a while ago started burying those, so they're not as unsightly that they're buried in the ground and not on the top. Again, we do have that 99 percent response rate to reach out to them. And if they have any questions or concerns, they can reach us directly through that email and/or with the phone number. Additionally, our field crews and our contractors are all branded and logoed with Metronet. You can see it on all of our trucks, our, the badges, and then also on all of our vests. We are clearly marked so that people know who we are and who we're coming, is coming into their subdivision and/or neighborhood. Again, this is your Metronet team. Thank you so much for allowing us to be here today. Happy to take any questions or concerns that you guys may have at this time.
Thank you, Robin. And thank you for being here, Marshall, I know we've met before, and Jeff. Any questions from the council? Comments?
Yeah.
Sure.
I have a quick question. I, listening to your presentation and everything, on all your community outreach, outreach solutions, they sound really great. Are these all your company's established procedures for outreach in the community? Because I did receive a lot of complaints in our community about issues about reaching out to you guys, and they're actually reaching out to the council, to the city, to different people like that. Has anything changed from the time you started working in Casa Grande with, because this outreach looks great? But has anything changed since you started working in Casa Grande to where you're at now?
As far as just with the four-tiered communication system that we have, that has been in place the entire time. It's part of just our national procedure of how we go about notifying residents. And to be 100 percent candid and honest, a lot of times, the letter and the initial postcard, a lot of times, residents don't recognize or realize that it goes in there. We did on the very initial time, we have what's called little areas or an LCP. One of those areas was initially missed when we first came into the area. But since then, I, to my knowledge, we have not had any of those issues. So, what I do know, if there is a certain area, I can look that up, and we can, we hire that out to different vendors. And so, I can actually go in there and check and verify with the vendor that it was going through. But again, I will be, you know, completely honest that, and I've had even other council members and/or mayor say, I was in that subdivision, I did see that notification. I just, a lot of times, people get mass emails, and it says, dear resident, and it will get tossed in the mail.
And don't realize what's actually going on, they just toss up the trash and move on.
But we also have invested in signs in front of the subdivisions as well that have our information. So, that's been another thing that we've added to try to get, reach out to residents and connect with them as well.
Great. That's, that's a lot, I believe what's been missing is communication with the residents, whether they threw it in the garbage or whatever, but we need to make sure that those residents are, that we're following through with this plan.
And again, I know Marshall's also done a great job. He left his name at the front desk also, to please, because that's one of our jobs, is to try to eliminate some of those phone calls to you. We don't, unfortunately, can't stop all of them, but we would like to take it into where we, we take that over, so you guys don't have to address all those concerns. And again, the best thing that I have found that I personally feel is the construction website, because then it's tracked. And as both Jeff and Marshall, every single Monday morning, our senior vice presidents go through, you know, what's our response rate? Why is this not taken care of? So, when it's, it's just, helps to keep us accountable, and then the resident has a direct way of saying, hey, why wasn't this addressed? I talked to some, so-and-so on such date. And then it's just also a reminder. So, that's the best way it just keeps, when those tickets are put into the system, it's just a way that, and then we report with the city. Monthly, we meet with the city to go over those tickets, where they stand, we share how much have been closed out. If they're not closed out, why aren't they closed out? For example, you know, we'll maybe have 20 tickets for the month of, you know, July or August, and then we will go through and say, 18 of those were closed out, but two of those were waiting on concrete, restoration, hardscape, whatever the case might be.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll just say, thank you also for coming back again and speaking with us. I know I got a chance to talk to Marshall as well as yourself. I live in a community where we had a couple issues that came up, and I believe they finally got rectified, but it took more than that 24 to 48 hours to get rectified whether that was not communicated well back to Marshall. I think he was overseeing that area, that's the lakes. And so, I know you received a complaint from my area as well, which was my neighbor. And so, a question I have for you is, I know that some yards, you have to put the unit, the big unit in.
Mm-hmm.
Do you let those individuals know that you need to have that big unit in that yard? Because then it goes under the ground, and that pipe stick is making a hole, right?
Right, right.
But do you let those people know that you're gonna be in their yard to do that?
Yes, we do.
And maybe Marshall?
For the hub deal.
Yeah.
Because, because people have complained about, I got a hub on my property, I never knew I'm gonna have this here.
So, you referring to the boxes in the yard?
The boxes, yes. And they did not say, they did not, they did not describe it, yeah, they did not describe it like, like what you got in the picture with flat to subsurface. They pictured it like an obstruction in their yard, pretty much. I know it's in the easement, but it's, they didn't know it was gonna be there.
So, some of the residences, we don't notify them that they're gonna be there. But if I can just take a step back for a moment, I wanted to address part of your first concern.
Sure.
With the community notification, we were originally using yard darts, but, and we're from the East Coast, they have grass. There's rock here, it's very difficult to put those in there.
Yes, it is.
So, we've established the big four-by-four orange static signs that we put in the community. And once we complete our pre-construction meeting, I'm not sure if she kind of held it up, we put these on everyone's doors when we do the pre-construction meeting. And that's after we've already sent out the previous communication, all the mailers and things of that nature. As far as letting residents know that the box is gonna be there, we don't typically let them know that, because it's just part of the original design in the residential or part of the easement, right? And it's also part of the PUE now. If a resident has expressed concern about shifting it, we also provide them with the information that we stay by all of the other utilities that's there. So, when APS has their box there, you have, you know, AT&amp;T or whatever company's there, we stay very close to those, those areas. And I think they, the concern is, is there's another box going in, right? And in addition to that, they're the ones who are maintaining the beautification of that property, of that property. It's not the HOA coming over, they have to maintain it. So, we do try to meet them where they are and try to rectify that situation. So, in some instances, we have moved that box out of that way, just to kind of provide them with some comfort to know that we're there. In addition to that, we've re, we've redone all of their rock bedding that we had to remove at the time of the installation, so.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
No problem.
So, I've had a couple of HOA presidents talk to me, one at our meeting here, maybe they could give you his number before you guys leave tonight from the last meeting, I think, or the meeting before. But, do you communicate with the HOAs and their elected board or anything? Because that might be a good way to get out information. Because again, those people are the ones that everyone's coming to in their neighborhood and saying, these plants are torn up. And I understand there's a time, you know, I mean, I'm sure you're not gonna fix them until you're done.
Right, absolutely.
So, you know, maybe that would be another way of communication. I think, like Councilmember Dugan said, you know, communication seems to be kind of the biggest thing here. And I did like to see your website to help educate people about how easements work, you know, because everyone says, the city lets them put it in my property. I'm like, well, it's not really your property, it's an easement for utilities.
So, as far as reaching out to HOA, we have spoken to some. We haven't reached out to all of them. I think some of the, like you mentioned, some of the communication or loss of communication is we don't always have access to who the HOA representatives are in every specific location. So, when we send out our construction communications for the residents, we send it to everyone in that, in that area. So, we're hoping that it does hit an HOA representative. And we've also, me personally, I've looked online to see who would be the contact for HOA. When we do some of the door knockers and we're dropping these off, we knock on the doors, hey, you know, where's the, do you have a HOA contact, right? And sometimes it's during the day, so people aren't home. But we have tried to do our due diligence, we're reaching out to who is in the HOA area and the cities and the locations that we're going to. But we haven't always been able to get in contact with them. But if we have some type of contact or something, we'd be more than happy to go out there and have that type of conversation. One of the presidencies that we spoke with, I can't think of the area at the moment, but what I did was, is he had a, like a town hall meeting. I went there and took all the questions, concerns, provided them with my contact, my team's contact, let them know where our address is, gave them our email addresses, so that way if they have any questions, concerns while we're working in there, they can call us and we can take care of it. So, again, avoid them having to call the city.
Yeah, so specifically, I was in Highland Manor the other night, just east of our rec center. And I saw some holes in the sidewalks that were filled with asphalt.
Correct.
And I'm guessing that that's gonna be resolved by...
That is correct. So, part of the requirements for, we follow all of the mag specs. Part of that mag spec requires us to have compaction testing, proctor testing, concrete testing, and so we have that in place. And we already, starting with some of our priority areas, like again, in those sidewalks to avoid anyone falling, or, you know, closing off the ADA ramps and things of that nature. So, we have that documented, and we have it in place. We just got our pass and seal of approval for the dirt testing, the ABC that we're using to backfill, as well as the concrete test. And we're starting Monday morning. And so, Monday, each day, we'll probably be able to do anywhere between 30 and 40 each day. And we're just gonna continue down this road as we're working in the community.
And so, I guess my last question would be, are you doing every community in Casa Grande, and how long are you guys planning on being in? Just so we know, I mean...
No problem. Our forecast is about 18 months. We wanna try to get in and out, but there are a lot of steps we have to follow in trying to, you know, in light of trying to be very meticulous about getting it done. Again, it could vary between whether it rains here or not, or things of that nature. But we do have a forecast in place. We're working that forecast, we're looking around 18 months or so to be done. But we do wanna make sure we're following all the steps, meeting all the mag specs, because that's when errors start to happen. But as far as myself, I'm here, we're right here on Hillabend, right, right the next building over from the Southwest Gas, and so we're here. I actually have an apartment here, to make sure we take care of the community and those who it serves.
Thank you.
No problem.
I'd also like to add real quickly about the HOAs. I too have met with a couple of different HOAs. Steven was kind enough to share that. So, I think it's, I'd have to go back and look at which areas they are, but I too have reached out to three. A big favor that I would ask, if you guys know of any community that is, please let me know, I'm happy to meet with them and go through pretty much the same notification system that I met with. One of the frustrations or concerns that I have is a lot of times when I go through and if it's older information, and/or sometimes in different markets, they will have three or four different HOAs within a subdivision. And it's really challenging, because a lot of times, HOAs want to stay hidden. And so, they're through real estate companies, they also have HOA communities. And so, I think once or twice in this, even in Casa Grande, I sent out some information, but I never heard back from them. So, I either called and/or sent emails. So, if you guys have direct lines of, you know, please give them my information. Like I said, I can either do an in-person meet with them, or potentially, since I'm based out of Colorado, happy to do that via a team's meeting to where, you know, I can walk them through the ticketing process, where we're going, things like that. So, that, I would really, really appreciate it if you do know of any HOA, please send them my way. Would love to talk to them, because we found that it just, a lot of times, it's just resident concerns. Instead of snowballing with angst and frustration and fear, if you let them know, hey, I'm here to help, this is what we're doing, here's where we're going. It just, it's actually beneficial, because I've had specifically here in Casa Grande, where the HOA president, you know, is happy that we're actually bringing fiber to the area and that there's more competition for better pricing. And so, he was actually an ally and an advocate to where he helped us kind of settle residents down, explain the process. And then he just fundered their concerns and complaints directly to me. So, it's, if you could know of any HOA president or anyone, please send them my way, more than happy to talk to, talk to them then.
You had a question?
Yeah, I did. Notice, do you have a lot of contractors that do the work? Does Metronet have any of its own crews, or are you contracting all of the field work out to subcontractors?
We contract everything out. We don't have any people that work directly for us. You know, we manage the construction. You know, so we have contractors that do the work across the country for us. We appreciate you guys allowing us to come in here and speak with you. Jeff Jenks, if you, haven't met some of you before, but there, there are a lot of things that we've, we've changed recently when we think about the notifications. We started out originally with some sandwich boards. We found out real quick, they're blowing down the road, they're not staying up, they're not getting the, you know, the, they're not having the impact that we wanted to see. So, that's when we changed over and got the big four-by-four signs. And I think that we've seen, hopefully, a big decrease in the calls that you guys are getting due to that. And then, of course, getting more engaged with the community here. I know that Marshall had an event that he participated in last week, I believe, or the week before. We wanna make sure that we're, we're participating in more of those things, so that we can, you know, we can get those calls coming to us, so. But there are a lot of different things that we've done with, you know, getting inspection services and then testing services and things of that nature, to try to minimize the impact of your community. You know, we all have homes, I live here in Arizona, someone's coming and digging in my front yard, I'd wanna know what's going on too. So, we wanna make sure that we're treating everyone like we would want our, you know, our property to be treated, so. Thank you.
Yeah, so, Marshall, I guess it would probably be you. You're working with the subcontractors.
Yes, sir.
On a regular basis, but is there somebody besides you that's spending a lot of time with these contractors? Because I'm sure you're pretty spread out.
Absolutely. So, I'm the project director, I oversee the entire project. I have a construction manager, his name is Patrick. He, and then I also have three field supervisors. Just to kind of give you very quick, because I don't wanna keep you too long. But the morning process is, we go out there, we verify that everything is safe first. All the signs are in place, warning signs are in place, traffic control is set up. Then we release the contractor to do the work. We don't let them work until it's absolutely safe. ADA ramps are set up, so that way pedestrians that wanna travel can walk out, people can get in their driveways, it's all set up. So, we have a five-man team here, as well as my project controls manager, who oversees kind of like, he's like my flagship for all the paperwork and concerns and any tickets that come in, he kind of dispatches them out. So, we do have, I do have a team here that's working, and including myself, I go out, you know. I met with, you know, the mayor here, Mrs. Gibbons, and so, she had a concern, I went to go meet the resident, provided her with the feedback, and he was smooth sailing, he was happy. So, we do make sure that we get out there immediately.
Okay, because I just wanna make sure that maybe some of the interactions with the contractors and the residents, there's at least a Metronet person there or available, because I, working with subcontractors, I know they're not always the best about sharing the same concerns that the prime has. So, I just wanna make sure that you guys are...
Oh, yeah, no, we dial it in. We try to make sure we keep them on track. We make sure that every crew at least has one English-speaking representative on there. I'm slightly bilingual, my wife's Dominican, so she's still teaching me. But we do make sure that the, we have, all of my field superspeak English. We have a contractor who has an English-speaking representative on there for their field supervisor, so we can get everything conveyed. One of my field supervisors, he speaks fluent Spanish. So, his name's Louis, so we're out there to make sure we have the proper communication.
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Again, sorry about the voice. But no, and of course, the accessibility, and I, it's always been a pleasure working with you. I know when I've had concerns, I usually contact Marshall, and I know you take care of those pretty quickly, so, but I think that communication's just gonna be key moving forward. So, we appreciate it. So, thank you for being here. Sure.
Even from a city perspective, it was real rocky at the start, but it got a lot better. We had some meetings, and they hired the right people as subcontractors, and it got a lot better. And so, we're, we're happy to see it.
And Robin, you talked about the tickets, and so, you're, you're going over those with the city?
Yes, so we have a meeting every month to go over permitting, where we've gone, where we've been, the permits, if there's any utility strikes, all of that stuff. We have a monthly meeting. Usually Max, sometimes Steve will come in there, and Kevin, sometimes whoever, it's open meeting to whomever wants to join in, so.
Are the number of tickets that you receive concerning to you? I mean, or is it average?
It's, it depends on the build-out. I would say for this size, it's about appropriate. Usually it depends, it depends on where we are as far as permitted and where we are in our start, so. But usually, it's about an average of 15 to 20 tickets, so that's about average. You know, sometimes bigger areas like Aurora upright outside of Denver, I mean, those areas are a lot bigger, there are a lot more Colorado Springs, so not a ton of tickets. And sometimes, those also include sprinkler systems, or sometimes it's just people, hey, why is my yard being marked up with chalk or paint, you know, why is this being marked up? So, sometimes it's that, other times it's restoration issues or something. But I would say usually it's right around 15 to 20 tickets per month, which seems to be about a good step. Sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Well, thank you again for being here.
Thank you.
We have two minutes, I think, to the regular session, so. We have two minutes, I think, to the regular session, so.